Meeting now and it's two months character. What a tucker to how kids and you do what a tucker to how kids and. Kiamah kina kina cute to kiamah Tara Tara kitai. He he Akiana te atakura he teo he huka he hauhui tihei Maori ora. So no my um kitty ne hui, welcome to this meeting this afternoon. And the Strategy and Policy Committee meeting to hear the hearings. And please note that the meeting this afternoon is being live streamed. And let myself or a democracy advisor know if you'll be leaving the meeting at any time. And so I'm just going to call for apologies. I do have an apology. Which I don't need to put forward because councillor Wolf is actually here. Um but one for Mayor Foster for lateness. And then Deputy Mayor Free will possibly have to leave early, so we're just going to put it anyway. We may finish before but um put that forward. So do I have a second of those apologies? Thank you councillor Fitzsimons. And now put the motion which has been moved and seconded. Uh those um so you can vote now, except I can't. Not quite open yet. And I'll just check that both councillors are happy. Put your hand up if you're okay to accept the absence of the apologies. Councillor Wolf, you okay with that? Is he frozen? I can see. Thank you councillor Matthews. Are you? Yep, cool. You just froze there for a few seconds. Okay, and looks like councillor Phone if you want to do some voting. That would be carried. Thank you. And I call on members to declare any conflicts of interest that they may have in relation to the items on the agenda. No, and confirmation of minutes. I move the motion that the Strategy and Policy Committee approves the minutes of the Strategy and Policy Committee meeting held on the 18th of June 2020, having been circulated and that they be taken as read and confirmed as an accurate record of that meeting. Do I have a seconda? Thank you councillor Fitzsimons. You're the only one waving at me today. Um so we will now vote on that one, the minutes. Councillor Panet, have you pressed your button? This is just the minutes. Have you pressed your button councillor Panet? Yep, votes have been counted. Cool. Thank you. That's been carried. And so there are no items not on the agenda. And this afternoon we have two, four, six, eight, nine people coming to submit. And we'll have one of them will be via Zoom. And so under standing orders thirty one point one, there's been no request for public participation, but we will be having these oral hearings. So we've got um we've got a few. I'm just looking at the checking the timing on here. But each of the simmers will have five minutes to present. And we'll just suggest that you leave a little bit of time in your presentation if you want to have any questions from councillors. And we will begin now with Archi Lim. Who is Archi Lim here? Not yet. We might have to do. Sometimes this happens. People aren't always here just at the time that their slot is because we're running very much on time. But we'll see. Is Celia Derby here? Celia, would you like to come forward now and? Might just say councillor Panet, can you help? Thank you. Just with the microphone. And so welcome Celia. It's great that you've come in this afternoon to talk to us and we shall have some questions. Thank you. So we've got a submission being handed out. Thank you. Right, and so you can just see the timer up here. That's how long you have.
And one that you're in a has your name on it. Okay.
Thank you, Celia.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Um regarding fair rent Wellington City Council, June 2020, Celia Derby's oral submission. I have greatly updated my oral submission, five minutes. I love my flat, which is full of ballerinas, angels and fairies. I definitely do. I definitely do not want to leave it. But it is a tiny bed sitter with no shower. Previously, my rent would only go up by three dollars fifty per week. In the under twenty years I've been in my flat, that was way too much. However, last year my rent went up by fifteen dollars fifty per week. That is a massive amount. It is very unfair to be charged extra rent from having extra money in the bank. I have my mother's inheritance, but that is to last for the rest of my life. WINS said, WINS or Ministry of Social Development, said one-off inheritance is not deemed as income. So I still, I could still be entitled to the supported living payment. I look after my flat so well that I should be charged even less rent for keeping it so immaculate. Please never charge me more than three dollars fifty per week every year. I have also made gardens on the front and back terraces. Are there any questions?
Thank you. You did a fantastic job telling us about your place. It sounds really lovely. Councillors, are there any questions? Thank you councillor Calvert.
Um thank you Celia for coming in. It's nice to see you again. I know you used to come to the council meetings.
Yes.
Um so just under the proposed scheme, how much extra would you be required to be paying? Do you know?
I have no idea, but I didn't even think about it.
Right, okay, all right. Thank, thank you. Maybe we could find that out for ourselves, just to give us an idea. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Celia.
Thank you. Councillor Phone has a question.
Celia, where is your flat?
I'd love to tell you. It's a beautiful, beautiful place called Queens Court Flat, Rick Street, Miramar.
Right.
There's only one terrible thing where I've tried to get this done and they just say they can't afford it. That all the walls on the terraces are just peeling off so badly. And rusting and staining and they just say they can't afford it. But it's that every time it's left, it's going to getting worse and worse and worse. And I've contacted Jazz Dyson and Rachel Tavita and several other people. And they just say it won't go ahead because they can't afford it. But everything else in Queens flat is top of the line.
Right. How long have you been there for?
I'm not sure since two, I am sure but I can't count it. It's 2008.
Okay.
Then.
Right, thank you. It's helpful.
Do you have any more questions?
I think that's all the questions. Celia, that was really good timing and thank you. Um it's wonderful to hear the pride that you have in your home and it sounds like you've put a lot of effort into it. So thank you for coming to talk to us about it.
Well, it's a pleasure and I just so greatly appreciate what the city council do all over Wellington.
Thank you.
Really amazing.
Thank you. And we appreciate you sharing your perspective.
And I've also made friends here, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Celia.
Thanks, Celia.
Thank you. And so I've just heard that Archi Lim will be coming soon, but I'm wondering if Damasa Ahmed is here. Bernard, would you be willing to come forward now? It's a little bit earlier than you need to be presenting, but I know that you're familiar with coming to do this, so hopefully that's okay. Thank you very much Bernard for coming in today to talk to us about this.
Yes. Good afternoon councillors. Now, I've got ten minutes, but I don't propose to take all of that because some such. Thank you. Yeah, yes, thank you. I have ten minutes, but I don't propose to talk to all of it, but we'll see how we go. There's a couple of things I'd like to cover. Um I'm just noting councillor Wolf's tie that I'm very envious of because it's rainbow colours. So quite choicey, our councillor. Um now, uh I have a few things I want to get through in terms of what I've submitted and you will have that online. And you will know that I've been certainly sending you some emails with quite a raft of information. But I wanted to narrow it down to a couple of things. Um this presently, I certainly want to take up a whole ten minutes. But as of lately this afternoon, the Principal Advisor for Housing, that's Mr Paul Davies, contacted me by email in terms of a range of issues I'd raised, particularly pertaining to getting data under the Official Information Act. And that letter is now advising me that what they'll do is come and have a meeting with myself and another tenant who are very concerned about issues pertaining to Fife Lane, but also some general ones as well. So that's why I'm changing my submission situation just a bit sudden in talking to you. But I still want to cover a number of points. Um I want to look at your policy in terms of, well, my base point, which I've said in my submission anyway, is number one is I'm in favour of the new policy. And the new policy is quite a substantial change to what tenants have been working under and being used to. Yeah, um now, so I'm in favour of, but I've got some reservations and that's what I'm flagging for you and also as I'm in discussions with a number of people across the tenant complexes. Um can, I want to look at, because I thought we could do some of these ones quick. I want to look at the issue of, in the proposed policy, you're talking about a rent freeze for eighty-year-olds. And what the policy hasn't stated and what I haven't been able to find out or getting any council officers to confirm for me is, okay, we've already got a number of over eighty-year-olds in the flats. What happens to them now? And my, where I am in the complex of Fife Lane is sixteen units. And we've got an eighty-two-year-old, an eighty-six-year-old, and my neighbour is turning ninety next week. So my neighbour next week, ninety, has had a rent freeze for ten years. He's been in the flats for twenty years, twenty-two years. Lovely chap. Um misses your CPD library immensely because that's where he only ever went to. So let's please get it back anyway. Uh so suddenly to say to him that, well, in terms of the new assessment, because he's just on super like me, his rent would be maybe hundred and sixty dollars a week. But he's been paying like a hundred and twelve dollars a week for the last ten years. And so it must be, and I've asked ten simmers this and no one's been able to answer me this. You must be surely going to have like progressively bringing it in. So that as he's, as he's ninety, well, you can say, well, we'll raise your rent a little bit the next few years, another couple of years later, we'll raise it next few years. Uh you know, you could use the term grandparenting, like your grandparent clauses. If there's been some immensely changed to it. Um and so I think that should be taken on board and some explanation may be given by council offices. How are you going to do that? It's easy to say that, I know that I'm talking to a number of people who are seventy-eight and seventy-nine and they're saying, well, you know, I'm coming up to get the rent freeze. That's going to be great. And so I can say, well, no, hold on. Look, changing the policy. So chatting to that group. But there's already that group that are over the eighty-year-olds. And as of the afternoon, my submission, I don't think there's particularly many of them. But there is, there is, it must be a number. And they're in the units and let's still just give them that opportunity of going on and working through it. So that's that point. Thank you. Number two, I've raised the issue also here. In D, I've raised the issue about how many council employees do you have in um council units? And I think that needs to discussion. I know there is a number. But it needs to be looked at in terms of saying, um that's what I've called for in my official information act, which understand Mr Davies is then going to give me some information of. I don't, I don't think there's hundreds, but I think there is a group. And one of the issues there is to say that, well, of course, some of the council employees may be low-paid ones. And I know for instance, there's a couple of parking meter officers who are in social housing units. And you could have said, okay, they were low-paid. They have now been graciously and also I'm agreeable to having received a living wage for council, which is excellent. But that's taken them up a little bit of money. But then there's another group, I believe, that are in the council units, who are council employees, who are on higher pay. Now, the new rent philosophy is going to be applied to them, of course. But it does raise a bigger issue about, well, you're locking away some of your social housing units, which maybe should be available for general public purposes, as opposed to giving it to the advantage of a council employee. Can I tell you, I was at another meeting of where it was a mixed, public meeting, but a mixture of some council officers and politicians. And for instance, one response was to say, well, maybe part of the social housing units are put away for council employees if they are essential workers. Now, that could make a bit of sense. And that might be the person who's clearly the rubbish collector now could be very much an essential worker because of what we've had with lockdown. Maybe the person who has some relationship for issues of road or emergencies turn out to, if there's a breakage in the water pipes or breakage in the sewage pipe, all that council employee, if they turn out and clearly they're a central worker. Um and that would give justification to maybe being them in a council unit. But again, I've raised the issue of trying to find out, well, how many are there? What salary bands are they at? And then does that fit in with what maybe is the application of the new policy? I'll tell you, in history, I've just found some photos in the archives that some of the pictures that were of council units that I've tabled, actually doesn't show a designation of some places in Daniel Street as being designated as staff council flats. And those designations is well gone, but it shows you that historically, the council must have considered that we here, we particularly need some council flats for council employees. I can quote you like when I was at 139 Daniel Street. There's a picture of that in the pictures of supply. 139 Daniel Street is a, it's got fourteen units there. And when I was there, we had two old bills. And one old, both of them were nineties. They're now passed away, bless them. But both of them were council employees. And one old bill had previously lived in Miramar all of his life in a three-bedroom home, raised the kids. And he was always there. He used to work for, we in Lower Cooper Street had a thing called MED, which the council owned and ran, which was quite marvelous, which was still the same day, but it's gone. Anyway, Bill worked in the accounts in the Municipal Electricity Department, MED. And he raised his six kids in a council unit over in Miramar. And he lived there all of his life. And then in some later decades, the council come to him and said, well, look, you're here by yourself. Your kids are flying in the coop and your wife died. Maybe it's time to move out. And he said, yeah, because he could see he didn't need the three-bedroom house anymore. So he came into a unit where I was up in 139 Daniel Street and finished out, went through his life to the end. Very happy chap. So there was, the point I'm making there, there was a changing issues of what some council employees had been in historically as to what is the situation today. I don't know what the situation today is and I think some of you might not know either. And I'm taking the opportunity saying, well, okay, let's find out about it, please, council officers. All right. I want to come to more of my issue about rent upgrades. And I'm not going to get into that too much today because that's the thing I'm going to cover further when I meet with council officers. It's coming to close time, but what I want to point out is, I listened very intently to our woman tenant who just chatted Cecilia in a senior round in Nova. Now, that's indicative of the problems of what had been experienced by some of the tenants in the past, which underscores what I've been writing about. Um by and large, year after year, tenants received two or three dollars fifty rent increases. And of course, then they substantially, and have got used to that. However, last, last year's rental, because of the change of methodology and updating it, some people got that huge big increase. And that's therefore her being an example of many people had that huge horrendous increase. Now, in reality, the new policy that's now tabled for discussion is going to assist and help a lot of those people. I am familiar with the woman's circumstances and for, for calculations of done of similar minded people, the rent increase will be somewhat minor. I'm talking into the area of like three to four dollars as opposed to what she experienced, now that people experienced in the past of a huge, a huge jump. Okay, I see times there, so.
I'm sorry about that. It'd be lovely to have longer to listen to your experiences because obviously you do have a lot of experience and you've listened to a lot of people. But it's good, I mean, you do know that you can email us and you've done that. So that's very helpful. It gives us a good background and thank you so much.
Well, what I'm suggesting that, given that I'm still meeting with senior council officers in the next couple of weeks, is to address further the main issue I had with my submission was about the issue associated with Fife Lane. But also the issue of how non-upgraded flats were compared to graded flats. Now, again, the new policy to some extent answers the um those, those calculations that were really wrong. So new policy answers it, but it also brings in a fresh lot of situations. Here's your situation of your new policy says fifty-two percent of people will gain. Well, that's great. But forty-eight percent of other people are there, are there for. And I've been sitting with people doing calculations at Ko Tūtū and Newtown Park Flats. And suddenly, because of the income that they have, which might not necessarily be really high, does make their jump, their rent jump up quite substantially.
I might just have to stop you now because we need to move on to this. But thank you very much Bernard for coming in and talking to us today. Really appreciate it.
Councillors.
All right. Um so I'd like to welcome now Archi Lim, who I think has arrived. I was told, no? Oh, I know. So Damasa Ahmed has arrived now. So thank you. Um welcome. Thank you for coming in. Um so what we've got is a timer just up here. It tells you how long you've got. You've got five minutes to just talk with us. And if you want to allow a little bit of time, sometimes people stop at about four minutes just to allow councillors to ask you questions.
No worries.
It'd be great. But yeah, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Kiara. Um I'm upgraded as a refugee. I'm going to read off my laptop. Um I'm upgraded here as a refugee to Aotearoa New Zealand in nineteen ninety-eight from Ethiopia with my family. I was a young lad at the time, only eight years of age. Um we have since grown to love New Zealand and have made it our home away from home. I've created so many fond memories here in Aotearoa New Zealand, which have shaped me and have allowed me to take every opportunity with both hands and instill in me that the sky is the limit. And given your work ethic and determination, you can do anything. I am married now and soon to be a father, which is exciting. Um we could not have pictured a better place to, a better country nor city to raise our child. I'm currently in my second year degree of social work at Fifty Day Polytechnic. So um I understand the power in education and where it takes you in life as well. So as a refugee sitting in New Zealand, understanding the key ways of life was enjoyable. As I viewed society and the world through an innocent lens and did not pay attention to other things that were going around me. I was a young lad at the time and all I thought about was just the next time I'll be playing with my friends and stuff like that. And not understanding the other social issues which impacted me, which may impact me later on within my life. Um my parents have honoured me, honoured me and my siblings by not allowing us to witness the struggles they have faced in raising us. A family of eight, you could imagine is, you know, busy, a lot of things to do. Um while supporting immediate families back home in Ethiopia, who were poverty-stricken and relied on their support. Um it is this significant point I wish to point out to you to consider when you are setting the fair rates policy for many refugees. Their responsibilities extend to those still in difficulties in their homeland. These responsibilities are largely invisible but have a substantial impact on the ability of former refugees to establish personal savings or attain financial stability in a financial, in a financial climate that is forever changing. So the opportunity, even given the circumstance at the moment with COVID-19, you know, a lot of people have lost their jobs, but the family back home is to rely on them. Um so the opportunity to have a reasonable rent and secure housing is key. Um I understand immense financial I understand immense financial pressure. Under immense financial pressure and internal displacement, my parents managed to provide for us and support our relatives back home despite its sheer difficulty, they persevered and managed to manage a trying situation against all odds while us integrating into a new society and dealing with internal separation as well as external ones. To achieve such an outcome, one needs to neglect the self, the individual and embrace the clan and village mentality as this was instilled in them growing up. You look after others and others will look after you. The refugee story in my view has never been understood for its entirety as the focal point has been fragmented and has never been viewed holistically. Let's face it, no one wants to leave their place if everything was fine there, you know? If you know that your family will never attain a life of dignity, then you'll be forced to leave that environment because you have no other choice. So, sorry, give me two seconds. So the plight of the refugees as people who are, so the refugees are seeing people who are burned to the system rather than people who are, who are of, who can be of asset to the system, you know? You know, I, given understanding that you had no opportunity back there and you come in an environment where you have a lot of opportunities, you will give, you know, 120% in order to provide for yourself and your family. Hence why I am, you know, currently enrolled in study and understand that, you know, in order to give the best opportunity for my kids and my, and my future kids is through education and taking this opportunity. The logic mine with reason and understanding of the true meaning of purpose of life, such views never be, okay, sorry. Refugees are resilient individuals who are mothers, fathers, daughters, sisters, brothers and aunties and uncles for a family abroad that they must support. If we begin to see the person and take into account the individual circumstances, then we are able to achieve equality of care and support in a sense that one is granted the means to lead a quality of life, the one glove is all approach is unfair and misleading and there is many facets to one's life. Studies, studies have shown that refugees and migrants commonly showcase a significant amount of resilience due to their capacity to recover quickly from difficulties and overcoming the most trying of predicaments. For example, I hope to, I hope to once I qualify as a social worker to be able to make a significant contribution to Aotearoa, New Zealand society for many years as well as support my family. I already am working full time as a mental health support worker in residential support living to provide for my family and I and here my family and I while studying full time. The reason for my, yeah, so this is what I want to put to you guys that the fact that there's a lot of other invisible responsibilities for refugees. It's not just the money that they earn here, it doesn't go into, you know, their saving or within the society that they live in. There's other really demanding and difficult situations for them.
Thank you so much for speaking to us today. And we have unfortunately run out of time for questions, but it is really helpful to hear your experiences and your background. It helps us to see the big picture. Thank you so much for coming in today.
Thanks for having me. Thank you, thank you.
Kira, I'm just going to cheeky Acha Lim here. No, she hasn't come in yet. And so I'm just wondering if Will Walters, you're here? Thank you, Will, if you'd like to come forward.
I've got 10 minutes.
Yes, that is correct. I've got 10 minutes here for you. Thank you, Will. So yeah, if you do, the timer is there and it's hard when you're presenting, it's hard to keep track of the time. Would you like me to give you, Will, would you like any warning sort of a minute before your time's up?
That would be great.
Does that help? I'm just sort of aware that it's hard for people to keep track of it while you're talking. So I'll do that. Thank you.
Okay. I'm a bit nervous. I was going to bring a support person, but I only had a couple of days notice and the person can get time off work, so.
Just take your time.
I'm going to try and be as positive as I can, but I'm also going to speak to the truth as I view it. And it may be uncomfortable for some people and I get that, but I think truth is important. And sit here and try and tell you everything you want to hear to protect myself, but I don't want to do that. One thing I want to say, which I heard in a previous submission, and it's not for your benefit, in the block of flats I live in, there, I think there is a council worker. I've never actually asked him what he does. If you start precluding council workers from city housing, that's discrimination. You cannot do that. It's just not right. I don't support that at all. Now, the consultation, I would say what consultation? The first I knew about this was I received this in my letterbox two days before that, oh no, a couple of days before, I can't say it was two, three or four days before that meeting was meant to take place. And of course, the lockdown happened. You will note, there is, it is only in English. There's no other information for any other tenants and we have tenants in our block that don't necessarily read or understand English. Okay, it wasn't there. Interestingly, yesterday, another notice came into our box about upgrades, which is new signage going up in the building. And everyone got one, I didn't. But interestingly enough, it had the information on one side. I went and talked to a couple of neighbours and asked to look at theirs and they all showed me and I snapped it. And, but it had nothing of other language, sorry, it had all the other languages on the other side. So I think it's interesting, it's not on the consultation document. Also, that meeting was to take place in Cororrie. How was someone from, on a low income, meant to get from Mount Victoria to Cororrie, you know, in the evening during rush hour traffic, 5:15pm to 7:15pm? How are they meant to do that? Nobody bothered taking that into account. I've also noticed after I read that, I went and had, we, after the lockdown or just before it finished, we received these. And I went in and I had a look. I've been making notes. And I used your meter and that, you know, I'm on ACC. I had an injury many years ago, it was a work injury. I've had four spinal operations. I get an accommodation supplement, but I do not qualify for anything else from WINS. So any medical things, I have to pay for myself. Going by what you guys are proposing, or whoever the proposers are, my rent, putting in the accommodation supplement, which has shocked me that that would even be included because almost that's like a form of double dipping into social welfare. That seems a little dodgy to me. But my rent would go up $79 a week. Yes, I get more than someone on a benefit, I get 80% of my income, okay? But I don't get any access to any medical care if ACC is not paying for it. No, I have to embarrass myself now. I sometimes have an incontinence problem. I have to pay for certain things to ensure I'm not embarrassed by it, you know? It involves a lot of costs. I live in a flat that is totally uninsulated. Now, I know the walls are wet because we've seen photos, they did a job back in 2011, I think it was, where they had to remove walls in my flat because it was so infested with mould and dampness. And on this side of my flat, where they cut out the wall to have a look at that, all the bricks were wet up to there. I've got photographs of it. They tried to say it was the colouring of the bricks, but the gentleman that carried out the inspection, who was independent, said, no, that's water. That was never fixed, it was just put back. So part of my cost, and bearing in mind, I can't go to work and income and get power or anything help from them, part of my cost is keeping that freezing cold place warm in winter. If you take, if you go ahead and do what you do, while it sounds like I might have a lot more than others if we look at a benefit, which, you know, it's harsh, I've lived on a benefit for 10 years because ACC wouldn't initially accept my claim. So I know what it's like. But if you go ahead and do it the way you're proposing, you say it might help other people, I don't think it's going to, not the way it's built. But it's going to take me from just getting by. And we all know food's going up, everyone knows it. You know, I go shopping during the lockdown, the prices haven't come down. We're still struggling with that and nobody's paying attention to things, simple stuff like that. Nobody's even looking at that as part of the rent. It's just, I, when I saw, I must admit, I rang someone and I just said, well, what's the point of living? It's like an assault after an assault financially. I've had people, I'm just appalled that even that 80-year-old cat, people are thinking of removing that, I just think that's disgusting. I've had people of that age come to me, they're scared, boy, are they scared, you know? They're not going to go to the council because they don't believe the council can help them. They really don't. I think that's sad, you know? We don't, we rarely see any council people, I don't mean city councillors, obviously not going to knock on our door, but we don't see any houses, city housing staff getting coming to get to know us or anything. I think the only time they're going to turn up is if someone's behind in their rent or something like that. So you will put me into the same position you say you're trying to take care of by, I think it's Marxist what's happening, I think it's a redistribution of wealth. That's my personal view.
Just coming up to a minute. So if you want, if you want to have anyone ask you questions, this is sort of the time, but it's up to you, one minute.
So yeah, well, I just hope you think of all the costs. I know, I believe city housing should run at a profit. I've always thought that and I have never once, and I doubt if they could find anything on file where I've actually complained about a rent rise when I came in, I'll finish with this actually, when I came in in 2006, my rent was $160 a week. It is now $276 a week. And if you go ahead with what you're planning, proposing to do, it will be $355 a week. I can't sustain that. I just can't. Any questions?
We've actually run out of time for questions, but if there was any, then I might some time. Okay, now it looks like you've been very clear. Thank you, Will. I really appreciate you taking the time to come in.
Just to say, so a lot of the stuff's disappeared off the website too. The Let's Talk website, off the front page of it. Luckily, we got a recording of it. But it seems to have disappeared.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think Acha Lim is still not quite here yet. I understand that she's still on the way. Right, so I'd like to welcome Stephen Cotterill, if you'd like to come and talk with us. So Stephen, you've got five minutes. I'll just point out that the timer is up there, it's the red bit. So would you like, would you like to?
Ask you people questions?
We can't, we don't interact, this is a submission. So you tell us about your perspective of it. That was, that was Will's.
Has he got the virus? Yeah, so who funded the council flats in the first place?
Stephen, as I said, this is, this is for you to share with us your perspective and we're not.
Nothing, if you people can't talk, you're getting paid on that and you can't even talk. Don't be ridiculous. Now, I'm grateful for my flat, you know, that's good and it has been done up, the Kotuku flats, but you people got to talk too, you're not morons, are you?
Stephen, we have a process here in the.
But you can't talk?
We can, we can ask you questions and we can.
Well, ask questions then.
Which flats, where are the flats? Which, which flat, where are they?
Kotuku in Kent Street.
And how old are they?
How old? Don't know.
Oh, councillor Rush, I'll just get you to make sure you're following process. So Stephen, if there's.
They've recently been renovated and they're not too bad, you know? I mean, there's a lot of things that are not very sensible in the way it's been done, but it is New Zealand, so you know, they put double glazing in the north, so that's something. And there's, you know, new shower, new stove and so forth. But you've got to realise that this gentleman is talking about, where's he meant to get the money from? Are there jobs out there? Where's he going to get the money? What are you trying to, you're going to try and put the rents up on people who already haven't got money? Are your friends of John Key? I beg your pardon?
No, we're not going to get into answering questions because this is about the, this is about the rent raise and it's really important that you share your perspective with us.
And Jacinda? So what do you want to know? Or is it just bullshit, you know? Is it an actual submission for you to think about or is it just bullshit? Tell me.
Stephen, I'd just like to remind you that.
I'm 64 years old, I remember Rob Muldoon, I remember Roger Douglas. So, you know, how old are you?
That's not relevant in this conversation.
Oh, what do you know about what's happened to this country? This country is a bloody disgrace.
I think, I think Stephen.
Inequality, right? Are you going to improve the situation with regard to people who haven't got things or are you going to make it worse? What are you going to do, bud?
Councillor Rush, I don't, we're not going to engage with this conversation, Stephen. It's actually really important that you submit constructively.
You're going to make it better for people or worse? You're going to make it better for the people who haven't got money?
Councillor Rush, I expect not to engage now. Stephen, I think, Stephen, I think we might actually just stop now. I think we've got, we've got the point that you're not happy with the raises and we appreciate you coming in to tell us. Thank you. All right. Thank you, people. Is Mustafa here? No. And we've got, I'll just, I'll just say the people are here because I'm not sure who is or who isn't. We've got Morstir Wafa, not here yet. She's just went through Zoom, is she? Not yet, okay. And then Nori is also, we might just have to have a few minutes break if we just sit here. You can just have a wee breather and then we'll get going once we've got our next person ready to share. Thank you to the people who are sitting in our public seminars, thank you for.
We've got Achai Lim here and then we've got one other person coming in, Mustafa. And then the other two apparently aren't coming in today so hopefully they can come next time we have the hearings. But welcome Achai Lim. I think councillor Pannett, is the microphone still on down there? Great, thank you. So Achai Lim, we have five minutes and you can see there's a clock up there which we'll have to reset it. It counts down so we've got five minutes. And I'll give you a warning with one minute left.
English no good.
Okay, well just take your time. Okay, so five minutes. So would you talk to us and tell us your thoughts, your submissions. So what do you want to say? Shall we ask a question? Does someone want to try and ask a question? Councillor Pannett.
I'm looking at councillor Fitzsimons and see councillor Pannett. But Fitzsimons, this is very confusing.
Thank you for coming. Thank you. Hello. Hi. Thank you for coming. Where do you live?
Sdekofer.
And where are you from originally? Have you come from New Zealand or another country?
I'm from Russia, Kuala Lumpur.
Ah lovely. Lovely to have you here. Thanks for coming to the council. Are there any other questions? Councillor Pannett.
Thank you for coming in. Are you happy? Do you want to pay more or less for your rent? Is it okay? Which is probably a redundant question. Everyone wants to pay less. But your rent, if it goes up, is that difficult? Is that hard?
I know what job it is. That's right. The pay is go up, but not so many years.
So you don't want it to go up so much? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Frey, did you have a question? Yeah, I was just wondering if you could tell us a little bit about your flat and how it is for you living in that flat. You're living in your home. What is your home like? You live in one of our council houses? Are there any problems with it?
No, no, no.
So you've stayed a long time in it and you want to stay a long time more. And how affordable is it for you? How easy is it for you to manage with the money and the rent? Is that okay? Thank you. Thank you very much, Achai Lim. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you. All finished. Good work. Thank you. Bye. We're just checking because we were understanding that Mustafa was still coming in. But that was about 15 minutes ago so we're just confirming. We don't want them to arrive two minutes after we've just stopped. So I was hoping the sun come in after a week of no sun. Very nice. We can probably watch walk up the road. It's on its way so we will just wait. So we're just going to adjourn for about five minutes. So Mustafa is walking up the road as we speak so we will make sure. Councillors, I just want to let you know that sometimes for our tenants aren't necessarily sure what this is going to look like. So what we think we'll do is maybe if we ask Mustafa some questions and he's happy to answer some questions about his house and his rent. So maybe some questions like we did before councillor Fitzsimons, you could start.
Hello, thanks for coming and seeing us. Can you just tell us a bit about where you live and kind of how you find living there?
Sorry, my name is Mustafa Omar. I live in Long Rix. Yes. Flat 89559. Adelaide Road. Perron Borough. Wellington. 6000 to 3 New Zealand.
And do you like it there?
Not too much because the rent is higher from me. One week, $230. I have two rooms, yes, because my daughter, she leave me now in the Australian. Because she study there. You want to study there. And then the COVID-19 is coming, she chaps there. She was help me at that time. But when she leave me, I can't because I am delivery in New Zealand nine years.
And where have you come from?
From Palestine. Yes. I have been here maybe 14 years.
Thank you. We have a question from Deputy Mayor Frey. Hello Kiora. What was it that made you decide to come and speak to us today? Did you want us to hear something from your point of view about your flat or?
No, I am not sure. Someone from here, they call me. And then they give me the time for to discuss about. I thought about the room because I had transferred room. I decision I apply also to last year, on August maybe, 29th of August. I apply one room. When she leave me, yes. At that time. Right now, didn't find me. Yes, I want to change.
I should have said you're very, very welcome to come and speak to us. But I was just trying to get to some of the reasons that you want to speak slowly.
The reason is, the reason expensive, that's the reason. $230. I am delivery, you know?
We have a question from Terry O'Neill.
Hi there, thank you for coming. I was wondering, could you tell my colleagues how warm your flat is or if it is insulated well? Like, is your flat warm enough for over the winter time? Does it stay nice and dry? Is that, is your flat?
Okay. It's okay. It's okay. Yes.
Thank you.
Is it true? It's okay.
Thank you. I own a Pannett question.
Thank you for coming in. So if your rent stays the same at $200 in Tujie, does that mean there's some other things that you can't buy, like food or power?
Yes. Yes, not enough. Also food, you know? Especially at that time. I need food and to live, you know? That's why.
Mia Foster.
Thank you very much for coming in. So if you were going from a two-room, two-bedroom, so would you have two-bedroom at the moment?
At the moment, two-bedroom.
So if you went to one, what difference does that make in terms of your rent, do you know?
I don't know who, from us here. She told me 150 by week. I don't know it, somewhere Kalburni. Somewhere, I don't know. She didn't tell me.
But 150?
Yeah, 150. Exactly 147, 150.
And you said you were doing deliveries?
Yes, deliveries.
For who or?
PMB, this is Reushin. This is Reushin. From Auckland, office, the office from Auckland. But my boss, he live here. My boss.
Thank you. Thank you, Mustafa, for coming in.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye bye guys. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know if there's a staff member that's willing to just have a quick chat with Mustafa. Because I think Mustafa thought he was coming in to find out about whether he was going into the one-bedroom place. There's been a bit of confusion and...
Can you, can us help? Can they help me? Namaste, by Indian.
Thank you.
I am Palestinian.
Thank you. So councillors and Mia, I think I'll just explain councillor Fitzsimons and I were talking. Because there were two submissions there where clearly the people coming in weren't quite sure what the process was. And what they've done is they've filled in the form and then it says, "Do you want to come and talk?" And of course they've gone, "Yes!", but don't actually know what that means. So for the next lot of submissions, I think we need to have a bit of a chat about the process to make sure that we've got good support. Because clearly we needed an interpreter for Achai Lim and that would have been very helpful. So just to let you know that we'll follow that up. But thank you so much for your questions and for supporting people to participate because it is really important. And we need to do everything we can to make that easier and a better process. So I appreciate that.
So Jill, would you make sure that people are coming for the right thing, that they actually want to talk to us about?
That's right. So I think we need to have a look at the process, that we make sure we do a proper check-in. Because obviously the form isn't leading to people understanding what it looks like coming into here to do that. If you're thinking you're coming in to talk to a couple of people and you end up in this room. Pretty terrifying. Yeah.
I have asked for one or two issues to be followed up. I'm sure others have been as well. So officers will get back to us just with some of the, like, water coming off walls is not acceptable, officer.
Yeah, I've already been talking to Angela, taking notes and going to give us a response. Yeah.
So thank you so much councillors for the way you've participated today. And I'd also like to acknowledge the participants who are still here. Thank you for coming in today and for talking to us. It's really important that we do hear from the community about this very important decision. So yes, what we'll do now is we'll go on to the general business. Which it's a bit strange because I asked councillor Fitzsimons to introduce the report, which you can do probably very quickly, I imagine.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the submitters for coming in today. This is only the beginning of the hearings on this. We'll have some more. And if any of you have people in your wards contacting you about this, there is still a bit more time till the 30th to get submissions in. And City Housing is very attentive in terms of making sure that people understand what would be the implications for them. So don't hesitate to hand any people that come to you to get their information and hand it on to City Housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a second for this paper? Oh, councillor Conde, thank you. So I imagine that there is no further debate on this because it's really receiving the submissions. So I now put this to the vote and if you could vote accordingly. Yep, so they've voted. And it is carried unanimously. Right, Koamutiti Nahui, we've finished this meeting now. So if you would like to etu, motakaraki. Goes across two pages. It makes it a bit more complicated. It is around the tables. See, it's on both sides. Kia pātou ahiahi. Have a good afternoon.